Okay. And...
Yep.
Good? Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Uh, first item on the agenda is review and approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections, if you'd be kind enough to share them, otherwise I would look for a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve is written.
I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, takes care of our minutes. Uh, next item on the agenda, fence ordinance discussion. Does that start with you, Laura?
Yes, thank you. Uh, good evening, commissioners. Um, I am here tonight to talk through with you, uh, the request that you all had given to Linda at the last planning commission meeting, talking through fences, um, and looking at some changes. Uh, from what I understand from Linda, there have been, um, specific issues, uh, that kind of spurred this conversation, um, specifically some fences being built along Manorville Avenue, and, um, a request by the commission to take a look at the language, see if there was a possibility for setting up a fence permit along those lines, and then, um, figuring out kind of what those mechanisms would be, uh, with the language. So, uh, we have pulled together some language, uh, within your packet this evening. I will share my screen on that. And in general, the, um, we've added some provisions, uh, specifically about, um, changing the height in, uh, the front yard to three feet versus to a half feet, um, for fences, um, and allowing for, um, fences to be, if any, if they're going to be any closer than three feet from the property line, then they would have to go through a conditional use permit. Um, this was one discussion point that, uh, Linda and myself and, um, other consulting planners went through to figure out what the best mechanism to, um, handle these type of cases would be. Um, originally, uh, we talked through variances, uh, had determined that variances was not a good, uh, mechanism to regulate these, only because then every property owner who would want to put a fence on a property line, um, would be required to, uh, show that there's something unique about their property, um, and about circumchanges of their property that would allow this variance. Um, so, having that, proving that practical difficulty felt, um, like a little too far for, um, something that could be as common as a, as a fence on a property line. Um, it, in the end, we decided to put together some language for you to consider with a conditional use permit that would, um, have the, um, same requirements as any conditional use permit, that they would be required to have a public hearing, um, and notice to all the neighbors, and that the, um, conditional use permit would then be, uh, would then be recorded with the property. And one of the conditions that we, um, proposed within the language is an access easement on the adjacent property, so that the owner of the fence could access the adjacent side, um, in order to maintain and upkeep the fence. Um, we're kind of taking a step back from those conditions. Uh, we wanted to have a bit more of a discussion on if a conditional use permit and establishing a fence permit in general would actually accomplish the, um, the goal that we're trying for, the, uh, the issue, would address the issue that really spurred this on. Um, so when, currently, how the language is written, when there is, um, a violation of the fence, uh, section of the zoning ordinance, the city enforces it on a complaint base, complaint basis, um, and so in the instance of, um, two tall of fence being built in the front yard, uh, the property owner would be notified of their violation, um, and then go through the, um, that process of the violation process of the zoning support that's established in the zoning ordinance. If there is a, um, a fence permit that is also needed on top of that, that's not necessarily a way to be that people will obtain a fence permit before building a fence. Um, so, again, the city doesn't necessarily know unless there's a complaint, if there is a fence in violation of either the fence permit or, um, if there's not a permit process. And so I, my only concern with the language in front of you is creating, um, a lot of additional, uh, work on the city's part as far as, um, processing permits and verifying them, and then also possibly, possibly getting into, um, some issues of the city taking on, uh, maybe not liability, but taking on, uh, kind of a stamp of approval when we don't really need to at this point. Um, and we can certainly talk through what the, um, the violation processes are with the city, but I don't know that, um, adding a permit process, in particular, right now, we do require approvals for any, for fences on any property with three or more units or non-residential. So, a fence permit would really only apply to, uh, single-family and, um, two, or two-unit, uh, properties, 'cause all other uses, if they have a fence on them, they do already have to go through site plan review. Um, so, that's overall is what I wanted to discuss this evening and get your feedback. And if we still want to move forward with, um, establishing a, a fence permit, then we would likely also, in addition to what we have here, need to include some language within our administrative section regarding the actual fence permit process.
And there is a, um, permit in your packet that we kind of did up, if that's the way you wanted to go.
Yes, so that, that is a mock-up of what a fence permit could look like if we were to establish it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Laura?
No questions for Laura. Just comments that I've got some concern about this getting overregulated.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just don't know how you elegantly maintain it. You know, if 25 years from now, somebody complains about the fence we were talking about up on 57 being more than 36 inches, how does the body that's either working here administratively for the city or that city council know the timing of when that was in, so what ordinance applies to it?
Yeah, and I'm thinking, you know, we, we've got an example of a fence, um, and we've stayed in here hedges. And I'm thinking if somebody was to put it in a string arbor vida along their property line, which can be real attractive, you create that green wall, so to speak, you know, is that considered a hedge, or is it not considered a hedge? Those things grow in excess of six feet, you know, how far down the rabbit hole do we want to go with this?
I have a member of the department that has a string arbor vida that runs through his backyard that are 20 feet tall, you know, so, I mean, the property directly behind him has a fence, but if they did, you know, if they didn't and they were using that as a, you know, as a fence, that would violate all kinds of stuff here.
What triggered the discussion? I mean, I understand some different things happened, but I meant, what's kind of triggered the discussion for us to go down this road, which I don't feel is a bad road to go down, but...
Well, I think that it's in violation of...
The front yard and the three-foot...
The fences on Manorville Avenue.
The two fences on Manorville Avenue.
So ultimately, we had somebody put up a fence incorrectly without permission, um, but at that time, they don't necessarily need permission as long as they're following the ordinance, right?
Right, but they didn't follow the ordinance because the one is six-foot.
Okay. And so, and then ultimately, did the council grant the variance?
They did not. They have applied, but they didn't pay for it.
Okay.
So, they had been asked to apply for a variance.
Okay.
So, they did fill out the paperwork, but they haven't submitted a check.
Okay. So, so at this point, their fence is non-conforming, and ultimately, per our ordinance, it should be...
Correct.
What is, what is the, why is the ordinance say three feet for a front yard?
Sightlines.
Yeah, sightlines. I think a lot of that's 57.
Because if it was a six-foot chain link, that ain't any different. You can see through that just as fine as a, over a three-foot fence. You know what I'm saying? So, that's, that, you're gonna have that argument coming down the road when we go and tell them they're not in compliance, because that just says three feet, but if it's a six-foot chain link, they're gonna say, well, you can see through that just fine.
But in your front yard, it's so that I can get out and walk in my front yard and I can look down and see, I'm not, there's really no obstruction when you look down. The only thing that's, you know, everybody's house is sitting back typically at the same setback, so that there are sightlines as you look down.
Yeah, it boils down to aesthetics.
Yeah. You know, I don't think it's Manorville Avenue, I think it's across the board.
Yeah, I was just...
That's the way it is, is that way. So, um...
There are chain link fences in the front yard on Manorville Avenue.
Yes. There have been for years.
Yeah. Yeah, they've been there a long time.
Long time. And they go right out to the sidewalk, and they just, some of them had hedges inside of them, and they did have them remove the hedges, but the chain link fence was still there. So, I, I'm just throwing that out there, if you go and tell one guy, 'cause his is six feet, and then you tell the other guy, his is chain link and it's fine, but it, but isn't. So then now he has to take his down if it's over three feet. And if it's been there for 30, 40 years...
Now, and I don't recall the old ordinance, but if the 36-inch requirement came along with this most recent update, which if I understand the date correctly here was October 28th, 2020, you know, the chain link fence has been there for longer, so it may not necessarily apply to that gentleman.
Right. But then this goes back to your statement earlier of the next council, the next zoning...
Exactly, it's...
How, how far do we keep going back, and nobody knows how long it's been there, and...
Yeah. Because not everybody's gonna come in and, you know, offer, offer up any sort of timeline.
And ultimately, this is one neighbor complaining about something that's been done, but it didn't conform to the ordinance where, when those chain link fences were put up, whether there was an ordinance or not, nobody complained, so it ended up getting put up and, and taken care of from that standpoint.
Yeah, and it wasn't actually a complaint, it was just a, a notice.
Well, yeah, which is, yeah.
I'm just, just asking, I was just trying to...
So, from a city's standpoint, Linda, what, what is it that you would like to see? I mean, you're not looking for, I don't want to sound this bad, you're not looking for more work, you're not looking to try to regulate more things, but...
I would much rather not regulate them in a permit form, because then if something comes back and somebody said, "They didn't do that," well, we're not going out and checking. There's not a, you know, and now we permitted it, saying you can do it, even though they did it wrong, I'm, would rather stay out of neighbor disputes too, when they, you know, when they say, "Oh, well, he's, he's too close to my property, he's, you know, too far." I don't want to get involved in that.
Right.
So, it's like, if we just had this ordinance that we give to everybody who asks about a fence, because we get calls three times a week about fences.
Well, and that could easily be added to the...
Web page.
Well, to every, every building permit that gets given, you know?
Mm.
Like, you know, you're building a brand-new house, here, give this to your homeowner, because eventually they're gonna ask about a fence if they're not putting one in right away.
Right, and, you know, just these few little changes are fine, and what you guys want to do with the front yard is up to you. You know, do you want to say chain link only in the front yard, instead of even a height?
But does the height matter as long, well, I mean, and what I mean does, is that 36 inches in there because it provides better vision around high-traffic areas?
Well, that's part of it, but...
As long as you're putting in a fence that doesn't impede traffic's ability, and I don't know necessarily how to define that myself, uh, traffic's ability to safely turn left or right or go straight.
I think if you bring any property into question, what's really going on is it's a corner lot.
Right.
And ultimately, they have two front yards and no backyard. And so they're trying to create some type of yard by putting up a fence in some fashion, and, you know, so if you have two front yards and your house is kind of sitting in the back, you know, it's, I think that's where it's, yeah, you can fence it in, put it up to 36 inches high, or I think chain link would be a good option in there, 'cause then the chain link could be 42 or 48.
You'd still have to have a limit on the chain link too, yeah?
Yeah, but you can see through it, um...
I mean, and as long as they stay out of the site triangle, because the guy that put up the six-foot fence angled it.
Right.
So, he's not even in the site triangle. You come up to that corner, and I've driven it just to see, you can see just fine. You don't even, sometimes, you don't even notice his fence really, unless...
And he did that, he did that on purpose, because he knew that was gonna be an issue.
Well, honestly, if you want to go site triangles, you've got trees that are sitting in the corners that are blocking more, that are in the boulevard that the city owns, that block more vision than a fence does, honestly.
I, I...
You go tell him to cut it down.
Sorry, uh, related to this point, um, the, the site triangle, that is enforced regardless of, um, that no fence is allowed within them, um, and that's something that the city needs to enforce regardless of the type of street. Um, typically, other cities, uh, establish the lower height limit, um, for front yard fences purely for aesthetic purposes and also kind of like a welcoming, um, purpose. Um, if you've ever walked along a street where all of the houses, the front doors are behind privacy fences, it's not, and, it doesn't feel like a good neighborhood, I guess.
Boogeyman's behind the fence.
Well, neither do chain link fences either.
And then you're, you're, as part of your zoning, um, abilities as a city, you are able to regulate with that being the justification. You did, that is, we, we justify, it doesn't have to be specifically for vehicle safety or site or anything like that. Um, we have a lot of zoning provisions that are purely for the feel of the area. Um, and if that's not necessarily important, that's fine, but, you know, you, you have to decide that out of the commission together.
I suspect that the reason that they limited the height and limited the fact, you know, or a fence being solid way back when was when the police go by, it's a matter of a secure thing that they could see into the yard.
Right. Well, I almost wonder if, if, you know, if, if, if we go this way where it's more of an ordinance than, than I think it needs to be, we, we need to define, you know, corner lots, you know, backyard, front yard, you know, with, with what's specifically, otherwise you're gonna, you're just gonna get yourself into more trouble because it's...
Well, that...
I mean, it might make the ordinance a little bit longer and have a little bit more detail there, but I would, I would rather have that than, than go through the process of, like Linda's happening to have, you know...
A permit that...
Permits upon permits that people are just gonna ultimately end up not doing and fighting and, 'cause they can just, after a half dozen of them, they're gonna know they can write whatever they want on the permit and, 'cause nobody's gonna come out and check it unless their neighbors complain.
Well, the other thing you could do too, if you're worried in the front yards, you could even put a setback on it, so far off of the boulevard with their fence, if you're worried about a site triangle. But I still think you gotta pick a height, though, and whether it be chain link or, I think you gotta stay in the same height on that every...
Well, and it would be very easy just to add a couple of sentences in, in, instead of putting a height on number five, we just put chain link only in the front yard, and one more saying, "Corner lots must always meet the site triangle."
Yeah.
Does that sound possible, Laura?
Yes, yeah, definitely.
I mean, that's only a couple more sentences, and it accomplishes everything you want.
We could, instead of, but specifically talking about chain link, we could specify an opacity requirement or transparency requirement, um, you know, I, I don't know all the types of designs of fences out there, but I'm sure that there are people who want a transparent fence like a chain link, but maybe want it's a different style or material or something like that.
So, yeah, slatted one, yeah.
Pick it. Well, some pick it, yeah.
You'd have to have a certain amount of open space that you could see through to give it to.
So, not to get down too far in the weeds, but if it's under 36 inches, you can do whatever you want to do from a fencing standpoint. If it's over 36 inches, that's when the opacity comes into the conversation. Is that what I under, okay. I think I said that right, that sounded right.
We're talking exclusively fences. The portion about hedges and things, the example that I gave earlier, you know, how do we handle that? Because that is mentioned in this ordinance. Natural barriers or something like that? Because I can, I can easily see somebody putting a string arbor vidas on their property line, in their front yard, uh, to create that sense of security or barrier or something.
I've had this on my neighbor's property, it's actually on my property line, that is well pushing towards...
Over six inches or something?
Yeah, but it's their backyard and it's my side yard, so it doesn't, but it, the only thing is, is that it is in my yard now, but, 'cause it grew well this year.
I've got a few trees that I struggle with on...
But then how do you, you know, again, too, you know, how do you, how do you regulate what's already there?
You can't.
You know?
But you've got to be able to...
All, all you can do is...
Maintain those things somehow, right?
What's theirs, as long as it's an existing condition and, you know, in good condition, whatever you classify as, but if they want to replace it, then they have to go by the new ordinance, just like any other thing that we would do in the city. If it's there now, you can't make them change it, but they want to replace it or renovate it, then they have to follow the new ordinance, where they would have to, being that they were in...
So, you're gonna restrict size of the hedges and...
I don't think you want to do...
...walls in the front yard. Is that what you're saying?
No, just the fences.
Just fences.
I don't want to do nothing with that, 'cause you can't.
We could just remove the hedge, hedges language from this.
Which is number four.
Quickly, um, we, hedges and just other plants in general are handled through the landscaping section, which is, um, also on, it's just above here, with general landscaping and then front yards and screening, oh, sorry, I'm not sharing my screen, so that doesn't help me very much.
You're really good looking at you, though, so...
Take your time.
Okay. So, if, uh, removing hedges, um, from, specifically from this section, I don't think will have any detrimental impact, um, and then we'll kind of avoid the confusion that you're referring to, um, 'cause, yeah, when is a hedge a hedge versus a plant that you just want to have grow as much as possible?
You'd still have to leave the hedges and landscaping in under number one, because that one is dealing with the utilities and drainage easements, so you have to leave that one in there. You could only take it out of number four, where it says no fence, wall, or hedge shall exceed six feet in height.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You'd still have to be able, we don't want to plant anything around utility boxes, fire hydrants.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good...
I've seen that.
Unless, unless hedges are, I mean, is there some spots where that traffic angle has to be kept, is that somewhere else in the ordinance that it doesn't have?
Yeah, it is, okay, all right.
Well, but if you're, you're ultimately looking for a document that you can make available to people when they come in here, I guess working that in there, even though it's not...
Basically, we're just looking for a fence document.
Yeah.
I mean, the site triangle is somewhere else in the ordinance, so...
I mean, is it something where you just...
Well, and it could be...
We could add it to the...
Well, you just simply referenced the, you know, the, the page in the ordinance.
That has the site triangle in it.
But if we add the one sentence saying it must, the fence must stay out of the site triangle, that, that is here.
Right. We think Sheldon.
Try to make it as foolproof as you can, I, I mean, that's just what my answer is. There's gonna be somebody that'll prove me right.
Oh, yeah, but if we can make it more clear.
So, is this, are you asking Linda to remove the three-foot off of, you know, they can do whatever they want on their, that's what I would say?
You want them to maintain both sides.
Because they still need to maintain both sides.
Okay, so if I, so then it's a conditional use permit?
If they want to...
If they want it on the property.
On the property line, or hook up to their neighbors, because there's, there's those issues too, and a conditional use permit will actually protect the neighbor they want to hook onto, because there's gonna be property there that is not theirs.
Yeah, and, you know, prime example's the one in my side yard. It's on the property line, and if they want to maintain it, now, now they have to be on my property.
Right.
And I've got a situation like that in my backyard as well, I mean, it's, it's commonplace enough that it's not...
And I, I don't have a problem with that, but somebody sells it...
But your neighbor will.
Yeah, but if you sell it to somebody else, you could have a problem.
So, are you guys, you want to change number five to be, um, anything over 30 inches must have an opacity, and we'll let Laura find that?
Yeah.
And then add a sentence about all fences must stay out of the site triangle?
Well, I think, I think four and five, I mean, we're gonna eliminate references to the hedge.
And reference to the hedge.
And five specifically, we'll leave the 36 inches in there, but anything over 36 inches has got to have an opacity defined by whatever color...
I would say less, or 50% or greater, or less, less opacity.
Well, hopefully, hopefully a scale that is...
Opacity or transparency, whatever term, we'll make sure that it is the correct one.
Yeah, I, I think, to me, 50%, 'cause if you've got a slat open, slat open, you know, you essentially are talking 50%.
So, um, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding kind of the essence of the conversation. Will we move forward with those changes that we just laid out? Is the city interested in, or are you interested in having a fence permit for any of those fences that are not on property lines? So, anything close to the property line, that will require the CUP, but for the single-family and, um, two-unit home for property, do we want to go with a permitting process, or do we want to leave it as, here's a handout of the information, you have to follow, or if you decide to build a fence, you follow it, and if you don't... You have to follow, or if you decide to build a fence, you follow it, and if you don't, someone complains, we'll enforce it.
I don't think we wanna permit, because that's just gonna cause more confusion down the road. Plus, how do you police it and how do you?
We've got too many of those things where we rely on people to complain for the enforcement mechanism, but that's, that's my two cents.
I don't know.
So is there a time limit on the person who did not build the fence correctly, on what they have to do, otherwise there's an enforcement action or?
Well, that all comes down to our, um, our enforcement language that's in the ordinance. And your other decision is, what do you wanna do about the property on Manorville Avenue?
Well, if they don't.
It's really the council's decision, but you can make a recommendation. I don't know, do you wanna just leave it alone? Do you wanna make them, make it chain link in the front? Do you want to?
I think you, you need to either say you need to bring the variance forward or modify your fence to meet the ordinance. I mean, and then you gotta give it a timeline that says if it doesn't happen, it will be, you know, I don't wanna say removed, but somebody's gonna, you know, here's the cost to remove your fence, because it's not meeting the ordinance.
Yeah, the only, the only way to make him comply at this point is he's sawed in half.
Well, and you probably can't necessarily do it.
Well, but that's after a healthy debate and argument and potential legal challenges and stuff, so.
And legal actions, yeah.
Well, I mean, the big part is, is if he doesn't bring it forth in a variance, he needs to follow the ordinance. If he brings it forth in a variance, we just set a whole new standard and this whole discussion is a mute point then. Meaning that, you know, we, you know, I mean, I guess you can leave it, but anybody who wants to put a fence up can say, you granted it there.
Yeah.
So why can't, you know, so you've, you've opened it up that thirty inches is a mute point now, you can build a fence.
Yeah, and he can't make the variance. He can't make the five conditions of the variance to get it approved.
Right, so I mean, at a certain point, if it's going to be, if, if it is presented and denied, then you're, you're coming back to what your ordinance is. And that, that starts to set the precedence of going from there, so.
We ultimately need, right now though, the, the board needs to make a motion in a second of how they wanna move forward to the council's on this. So I mean, what you said is that.
We don't need to take action.
No, no, I guess I'd like to have a, kind of a, a little bit more done and dusted, polished ordinance to, to debate and discuss before we, we had, I made my own two cents there, but.
And this ordinance will be published and we'll have a public hearing on it in August, so at our August meeting.
Wonder if a copy were to actually, didn't land up in their mailbox, if that would be a good thing or a bad thing. That's how the, the variance request ended up, so, well, I don't know. We'll keep working on it. Have to think about our friends on fifty-seven. I don't have any really good options there. I've got bad and ugly, so.
Alright, so we'll bring this language, revised language, um, with the public hearing at the next planning permission meeting. Um, I think at that time as well, I, alongside of that can create just kind of a handout or something along those lines that, um, the office can have or it can be on the website that will have all the information and kind of lay out, you know, you don't need a permit for this, but if you wanna put it on your property line, you'll need a C P, et cetera.
And Laura, we can make those changes. We, it's actually on for the council, just to take a look at Wednesday night.
Okay.
So if we just make those changes and.
Yeah, I can run that tomorrow.
Send that, send that out tomorrow.
Yep, yeah, sounds good.
Anything else on our fences?
Do we need to bring up and ask the council to do something with the, with the fence that's not in compliance or not really?
They might as well get a little bit of their feedback as well on the whole thing if they're looking at it, you know, there might be other thoughts or ideas we can weave into this thing, so.
The only thing we can do is just make a, send them a note saying he's not in compliance with the current ordinance, but that the current ordinance is being reviewed.
The fact that he submitted a variance with no.
Yeah, he should know that already.
That he needs to know that he's. That it's not even, it's not even being looked at or reviewed because he hasn't paid for it.
Right. Is he aware of that, that he hasn't paid?
Yes, oh, yes.
You've breached them?
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, what we could do is too, is, you know, send him like our nuisance letter, saying you have just long to fix it. Here's the copy of the ordinance, this is what you need to do, so.
Could be a touch aggressive, but not, not my decision.
No, I don't, I mean, ultimately you put it up without, you know, I mean, just because you're, I don't wanna use the word ignorant, but if you're ignorant of the rules, it doesn't mean that they don't apply to you.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to imply that at all, sir.
But he came to, I don't know if it was the last meeting or two meetings ago when we were addressing it, saying that he had gotten permission from City Hall. Now, that must've been two meetings.
And where is that in writing?
Yeah, well.
There is actually an email that Amy sent him that doesn't really say you can't, but it didn't say you could either. So.
Sticky.
It, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Well, but, but, yeah, it is a big deciding factor, because it mutes the whole three foot. If it, if it gets approved, then, you know, I mean, you can put it in your ordinance, but.
But there's nothing in the ordinance that allows a city employee to set it aside, so it's.
No, it's approved at all, right.
Going back to our conversation.
Yep, okay.
Uh, assuming we're done with fences, update on Plaza Fifty-Seven Coffee.
This is just for your information. This will be a public hearing at the August meeting. They are going through the process right now. They've submitted a conditional use permit. Um, Brad and Laura are working with them. They're going to put a little coffee shop in the parking lot of Plaza Fifty-Seven. And so, just kind of for your information, if you had any comments, but like I said, Brad and Laura are working with them right now on getting all of the appropriate stuff. It'll be noticed for the August meeting.
This is just a drive-through only?
This is just a drive-through only. It is, right Laura, as far as I know?
Yes, yeah, um, so what they're proposing is kind of a kiosk, um, and the, from my understanding, the, um, kiosk will have bathroom facilities for employees, but there will not be any customer seating. It will just be drive-through only. And I think access on the both sides.
A lot of those are just.
It's what the site plan is showing. Um, there are still a number of items that they need to get us with the applicant, even for it to be considered complete. Um, so if they're not able to get the, those items to us in, in a timely manner, it, this may actually be moved to the September meeting. But, um, we're meeting with applicant tomorrow and we're just short all of that out.
Forgive me, because I know it's a very ignorant question, but why do they need a conditional use permit?
Um, in the C two district, drive-through facilities are a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions? Uh, next up, our update on Marty's subdivision, Lot Three building in floor floodplain, pardon me.
Yeah, this is another one that you will see in August, um, a public hearing. Uh, Mike is here. So, um, it's a building and a parking lot, and I think Laura and Brad are still working with Mike on this. You're still?
Yep, yeah, so, um, the applicant, uh, the engineer for the Marty property is also, uh, working on Plaza Fifty-Seven. So we are meeting with him tomorrow and kind of going through our laundry list of items. Um, but they, this particular project requires a CUP, um, because they are proposing an amount of fill in the flood range district to bring, um, a lot of the site out of the floodplain.
Is that, Mike, is that adjacent to this building out here?
No, it's next to my shop.
Next to your shop, okay.
It's just to the, what, this is the south?
Or west?
West.
West.
So, quite, this is in city limits then, right?
Yes.
So the proposed gravel surface, what's that for? Because if it's for parking, I thought our, we have a city ordinance that there has to be no gravel parking lots.
Well, he's got parking lot there.
He's got a parking lot, but then he's got the proposed gravel surface behind it.
I think that was one of the questions that you were gonna talk to Les about too, is what was that gonna be used for?
Yep, yeah, if it's used for storage of materials or anything like that, there are additional, uh, screening standards as well as floodplain standards that we wanna make sure that we're meeting. Um, if it is going to be used for parking or to meet, then the, I believe you're correct, that, um, parking areas need to be, uh, painted and curved and better, um, from my understanding, or at least painted.
And that part won't happen until we do the construction, which who, who knows when that'll be?
Sure.
This isn't actually a proposed building. It's, it's just taking advantage of surplus fill that I have now at the subdivision, and I just wanna bring it here and have a pad built up so that someday a building could be put on it. That's all this is.
It's kind of an unbuildable lot right now, right? Unless somebody does something to it.
Right, it's, it's not buildable at grade, at the present grade of that now, it's not buildable.
Okay.
According to the city, to the, what's changed since twenty years ago when it was brought in.
Anything else for Mr. Marty? No? Uh, sixth item on the agenda, transportation map slash plan.
Um, did anybody draw all over their map and bring it back?
Not yet.
I drew some, but I didn't use the map. I created my own.
Oh.
I left mine here with my phone and somebody took it.
That sounds like my dog ate my homework.
I love that. I came back and they took my map, but they left my phone.
You must've had it got here right, right when the place opened up.
Maybe they should've.
At that door.
Maybe they.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Maybe they should've taken your phone.
They should've.
That'd have been the better.
They knew, the map was more important.
Can we use that projector there?
Ah, I have to hook my.
The answer is no.
No.
Well, in spirits, sir, what were your thoughts?
Uh, well, I can just circulate this around.
Show and tell?
Yeah.
At least somebody was on the ball. I wasn't.
I've got it sitting in my bag, but.
So here's.
I didn't know this was a phone.
It's a smartphone.
So here's, uh, Casa Meadows. Casa Meadows, so bringing that up and aligning with Spring Creek. I think this is Twenty-third, getting that to connect across the school property to Fifty-Seven. And then this is, I don't know, creating some sort of, in the future, extension of Sixteenth Street all the way over to the Township Road. Um, we already, I think with Big Lowes, we're coming around the backside of Wilkers and connecting up here. So, you know, just extending that. I know this is all flood through here, so, uh, and then just extending these up and, you know, like we've talked before, Joe, just kind of creating as much of a grid as we possibly can
Yeah.
to try to get away from all of this, all these streets that go nowhere.
And the tough, the tough part with this will be, just like they did in here, just following where this.
Yeah.
You know, with ultimately what's buildable, what's not.
Yeah.
And that all.
Yeah.
It's got dead-ended in there too, isn't it?
It's right here, this one that comes along, comes along here. It just stops, because there's three ponds that go right in there.
Yeah.
Right down along the back corner there.
And then this is, you know, common acres out here, so coming, we've got that stub off of that general development coming back around that property. Uh, nothing is here yet, but I can think at the top of the hill where we've got this driveway, because there's a big hole right in here, right? So you can't get down in there too far and just get some sort of a connection there.
Well, and when do we come?
Well, yeah, see, that's just it, yes.
You know, something back in.
At some point it would require a bridge, but as to where that's gonna happen, who knows? Yeah.
Well, if you think about how Byron grew over the years, you know, you just really had the one main access on the Highway Fourteen and they just got to the point with the Summerby development where they needed a second one, and that's kind of when Tenth Street got put in.
Yeah.
And, you know, all of this development up here is all fine and dandy, but ultimately, how many ways people to get into, into Rochester is gonna be Fifty-Seven.
Yeah.
So you need another viable access on the Highway Fourteen, otherwise you're just gonna have all your development here in the traffic jam on Fifty-Seven.
Yeah, so, and that's where Sixteenth Street is, you know, is critical.
Ultimately, you're gonna get people who are here graduating.
Yeah, yeah.
When they all drop their kids off already and then they need to leave town, so.
That's why that's there.
So, and I think all of this is pretty much buildable. I mean, at one point Maston Parkway was supposed to start back here and line straight up.
Because it was gonna come all the way across through, uh.
If you would take this road here and pave it out to Main Street, you know, the gun club, that would give you the access to come back and then they would go down.
Yeah, Thirty-four.
Down Thirty-four.
But it's still bottlenecked at Fifty-Seven.
But it at least gets in.
Yeah.
It's gonna go faster here than trying to send it through here.
Yeah.
Even with Sixteenth going across, you still need this way.
So this is just some general concepts that I, you know, for collectors or archaeologists.
There's enough people over here that want that blacktop.
On the north side. On the south side.
They don't care. That's the thing, they want it. They'll pay for it.
Where we've talked about, here's South Port, we talked some development, you know, on the backside of the cemetery here. Um, this wasn't there, but, and then up.
This one is coming in somewhere like this.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, and then this is, you know, in Mike's area here as to connecting, you know, past the street that comes out here and connecting back over here by his shop.
Which is always a plan on plan.
Yeah. I think we probably ought to.
We need development to pay for it.
Get something here to connect back to here, but who knows? At, at one time, and this was twenty years ago, there was talk of extending Fifty-Seven coming south and connecting here with Fifteen.
They're still talking about that.
And this just being a, a city street, yeah.
Well, and if they're gonna potentially do work over here. You know, do you at that point start to, you know, work on.
Start developing out in here.
Work on trying to stub some of this in, you know, and then at that point, you know, you have the frontage road that runs here and you have this, that it's all gonna need to be, you know, blocked up and built up and, you know. This, this, this house here and this house here can easily get built, can get built around.
To blacktop that there.
Well, and this is already blacktopped up here.
But I mean, to get it from here to here, you have a one and a half million dollar infrastructure you gotta put in before you can even start putting a road in. That's why it's, it's not.
Curiosity question, the only, the only two accesses we get though are Fifty-Seven and County Fifteen.
Yeah.
Yep, and nine. And nine, and nine.
Right, that's what I was saying, so if you're gonna start to organize things, are you funneling, you know, the main point of what you just brought up, is everything funneled back to here, or are you starting to funnel stuff out to Fifteen?
Eventually, there's gonna be interchange at Fifteen, interchange here. I don't know that we'll ever see an interchange at Nine.
Will that stay open, or is that gonna, with the new highway coming through?
I don't know, it stays in.
Yeah, I suspect it's gonna end up with these J turns.
Yeah, yeah, it is, yeah, yep, I think you're right, so.
I think if you look at, in Dallas, twenty-year plan, that they just rolled out on four, so I think that's what it shows for.
Does it say J turns there?
For Nine.
Okay, because they, they made the announcement that.
People can go out to Nine.
County Three and County Four are J turns.
Yeah, but I think they're, that's because they're.
J turn back at Fourteen, that's gonna be a huge.
Yes, yeah, but it won't be long before that one's. Yes, but it won't be long before that one's, that and Five are taken care of.
Honestly, that's, that's a big one you're going to push for, is to get Sixteenth all the way through to the dump road, and you're going to have to get the Gun Club Road blacktopped, too, to get that traffic.
So these are my conceptual ideas.
Fifty-Seven is going to be flowing theoretically faster with the roundabout than the stoplight.
But I think coming to the north here is critical, I also think Fifty-Seven is going to be critical. Now, there's people that argue against this one, Fifty-Seven, school specifically, that's going to be a battle, so will that ever happen? Who knows, but it doesn't prevent us from putting it down a map.
It can happen down the road when the school has different leaderships. It's like anything, when you have different leadership, you have different ideas.
Wait five years, you know, it'll happen.
Free job!
Can I keep those, can I give those to Jim and Brandon?
Yeah, and obviously, there was just, this was just top of the head without any consideration of the job. There's floodplains, and there's elevations, that all happens back to this, like an overhead view.
That's good.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Anything else anybody would like to discuss this evening? If not, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll talk to you quick, Mike.